Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I've called the meeting to order at seven o'clock. You know if Bob's coming, Michael?
I do not. John? I can call him, but I'd have to run out to get my cellphone.
I would ask, let's see if he comes. We've got a quarrel. I'd ask if anyone's recording, would they make it known? First, others, approval of the minutes of January 11th, 2016, January 25th, and March 28th. I don't know if you've had a chance to...
Just finished in March 28th.
Okay. Take a couple of minutes to finish that up so we can get that out of the way. Close the official.
Yeah.
Spelled Mr. Kane's name or... Unless you changed it, it's with a K, isn't it?
I didn't know I was here.
That was back on... January 25th. The assisted living, yeah. Little Bertie told me you weren't supposed to be joining us at the front table. Did you get that memo? Anyone care to make a motion on the minutes of... Let's see, the first one is...
January 11th.
Correct, January 11th, 2016. Don't all jump at once.
We don't really have time to read these and know whether they're accurate. I mean, I... I don't feel comfortable voting on them.
Well, we can take a little time afterwards. Do it, do it, Ben. All right. We will table that for the moment, and we will jump into a approval-not-required plan for Charlotte Furnace Road care of AD Makepeace. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Kane with the AD Makepeace Company. We have submitted for your consideration and approval an A&R plan for Charlotte Furnace Road, creating a six-and-a-half acre parcel toward the Carver end of the road on the east side of Charlotte Furnace Road, and what I might call a point of access further south on that in order to access the solar field at some point in the future. That lease runs for a decade or two, but I figured why we were creating the six-and-a-half acre lot, we would also just create a path in there so that if I get hit by a train, we don't forget to have access to that large parcel to the rear. I think it's pretty straightforward. It has been labeled the access point as a non-buildable lot. It's not the intention, it's just for access. And the other one is a straightforward six-and-a-half acre. If you have any technical questions, we've got Ken Conti from Beals &amp; Thomas and Richard Cirque. Did you want a copy, Joe?
Got an extra, you'll take a look.
Questions?
Can't use the utility easement for that purpose.
Beg your pardon?
Can't use the existing utility easement for that purpose.
No, no, you can't do. But he's studying diligently. Just exchange air-conditioning noise for...
What was it?
Dirt-bank noise.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So, Jim, you're making Lot 1, right? The remain...
The six-and-a-half acre?
Right.
Yes.
So, the remaining land, there, no sense dividing that up yet? You just...
Nope.
Wait and see what happens?
Yep.
Yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Jim.
How we doing on zoning for... What is this?
It's R-60.
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 And the business development overlay district.
So, what's our frontage requirement?
It's 100 and... 130.
It's 180, I think.
Is it?
In the R-60, pretty sure it's 180. It's 150 in the MR-30 and the R-30.
So, we've got 360 there. Mr. Speaker? Just in case you need it, it's minor.
I don't think so.
Buddy, any further questions? Who care to make a motion?
Move we sign the plan as presented?
Second. Any discussion? Done, all in favor?
Aye.
Couple of those scientists.
This is the new, is it different? Oh. Jump down.
This says it's Maple Springs North.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to start the next one?
Certainly.
I think if it's all right with you, I'd like to go to the board because this is a little bit of context, I think, and history.
For the record, this is an approval-not-required plan for Maple Springs 2 North.
There's many of you... Jim, could you turn the microphone towards you?
Does this work?
Yeah, better.
As many of you know, we have been working over the past several years to have Maple Springs find its way into a conservation outcome. By way of context, this is Miles Standard State Forest, this is our project Redbrook in Plymouth, this is the central core T-Mud, depending on what MIPA-based name you give it, and this is Frogfoot. Most of this land into Plymouth and Carver, I'm sorry, Plymouth and Wareham, west of this line will find its way into permanent conservation over the next several years. We have placed most of Maple Springs into conservation as well. What's before you this evening is this finger. Now, why is the finger of some significance to go into conservation? Because in theory, you could park your car here and go all the way up over the years through the various lands that will be put into conservation, all the way up to Halfway Pond in Plymouth, which I think, as you think about conservation outcomes, a longer path or a large chunk is much better than an isolated two acres. So, what we've given you tonight is it's really a, it's a busy little plan, it's like a finger, you don't know which way it's going, it's got a reservoir, so I thought putting this in context would help you. It's this piece right here that I'm moving my finger over. All of this is in conservation. This piece, we're hoping, will find its way into conservation. We're here this evening because, over the past several years, just as you folks have done in other settings where we have isolated out bog complexes or other water structures, what we're asking you to do this evening is create these three parcels, which on your plan, one is big enough to actually read, and then the other two are quite small. So, we came up with this exhibit to explain and show you exactly what it is. When lands go into conservation, the people taking the land or holding it in conservation really don't like to be left with anything other than open space, water, pucker brush, things people understand. People don't want to get stuck with our dam, nor do we want to, quite frankly, lose control of the dam for reasons that are probably obvious. So, we're asking that you create this parcel, which you'll see, and I'll be more than happy to pass this around, is a water control structure that's important to the company, one we want to retain ownership of, a smaller water control structure that we want to maintain ownership of. And this larger area, which is this dam, which is currently in permitting at the state level, and shortly, though I've talked to Dave Bichette about it at the local level, every number of years you go about and cut down some trees and do dam repairs to make sure everything's up to snuff, and that's what we're undertaking on this piece. So, as we seek to finish this larger conservation outcome, we want to retain these three, these three assets because the water for that bog complex actually comes down and then goes west. So, we want to control these, and frankly, no one who wants to manage open space wants to manage a dam structure. So, it's pretty straightforward. Thank you for putting up with this very busy plan, and, you know, it's east-west, and it just doesn't sit right or sing as it comes off the paper, but it is obviously accurate and to the point of this piece coming east to west. If you'd like to see it, I'll be more than happy to pass this around, but we thought when we met with Dave and then Ken, he had asked for a larger version of exactly what these three items were doing because on the A&R plan, one in particular is so small, it looks like a little dot. Everyone square with this?
And the access to those landmarks will be...
We would retain all rights over the, over the existing bog roads, no new clearing or anything along those way. This bog road comes all the way up, all the way across, goes all the way up. Although, when I was out there one day, a guy I've been with the company for decades said, "Watch out for Idiot's Hollow."
Idiot's Hole.
There you go, thank you. All right, well, see, I'm an idiot, so I didn't know that, so I didn't get stuck in it, but I guess if you go further up, it just gets really soft quickly. So, only the bog guys go out that way anyway. So, that's the story.
I think there's a lot of people have claimed ownership to Idiot's Hole.
Very few admit to getting stuck in it, though, from what I'm told.
That's what I mean. Cost them a vehicle or two.
Questions?
So, the finger...
Yeah.
Is what we're seeing minus the three parcels you're taking out?
Yes, that's correct.
And the finger, you've broken up into two parcels?
Yeah, we did that a few years ago.
F1 and F2?
Yeah.
Are those parcels already existing as separate parcels?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. We approve that?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Of course.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? That picture right there, where, can you just tell me where...
Yes.
The one in the corner?
Sure, which one?
Is that the, the bridge right here? Yeah. Where is that on my map?
Right here.
Okay.
That's one that we're trying to create. Two is the smaller culvert, and then three is the whole lead-in roadway dam structure.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I?
So, Jim, so taking a look at, at the parcel F1, the, the parcel three that you want to take out of that 30 acres is actually only, what, a half acre? Something like that?
Yeah.
That you want to retain the rights to. Then parcel F2, which is a 23-and-a-half acre parcel, the parcel one you want to maintain is only 1,200 square feet, just the, the structure itself.
That's it.
And then, I guess I'm missing the third one.
Tiny, tiny, you probably can't read it.
It's up, it's up higher than two.
Yep.
It's 114 square feet.
Oh, there's parcel two, okay. So, that's parcel two.
Can you see the board?
It's 114, no, no, I got it, I got it. Yep, no, that's fine. So, so the finger itself goes into conservation, and you just want to just have the, the rights to the water structure and, and access that's...
Yeah, that way, when we have to go in and do maintenance, which you do every X-number of decades, we're able to do so, we'll maintain our access rights. Just nice and clean, and more importantly, it's clean as to who owns it. There's never a question, it's clearly the company's, and therefore, there's an issue we got to deal with it.
Mr. Kane, could I ask a question, just for legal purposes? When you record these, do you also record your written legal rights to access to them? You've mentioned that you...
Oh, all the easements?
Yeah, well, will that be all part of these documents, Mr. Cirque?
Yes.
What happens when parcel F1 and parcel F2 are ultimately conveyed, there'll be reserved rights over, you would access parcels one, two, and three?
And that will go with these?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, the, the plan will go on, but any transfer of F1 and F2, we'll be careful to reserve the rights, otherwise, we would be undoing what we did on the plan.
And, and when do you expect the transfer to occur?
We don't really know, I can't tell you. Hopefully, this month, but it could be next year. It's one of these, you work it, you work it, you work it, and maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't, but I got to get all my ducks in a row in case it happens. Thank you. Sound all right, Charlie?
Sounds okay. I would encourage the board, when you take your vote, to include the fact that none of the parcels that are shown here on are, that you're endorsing anything with, with zoning, even though there's a notation of that effect on the plan, that your vote is simply to approve it's subject to the notes on the plan, that you're not creating separate building lots. I don't like to see A&R lots without frontage, but I understand what they're doing, but to the extent that it will protect you, I'm suggesting you just take the vote with that language, that's all.
Someone care to make a motion?
I move that we approve the plan on the condition that parcels one, two, and three are not considered buildable lots.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
They could build on 114 square feet, but you never know.
Yeah, they have their TV showing their tiny houses, they'll build on them.
Mr. Chairman, we did not ask for item D on the agenda. I, I read the agenda, it was a bit of a surprise, I don't know if it's leftover from another agenda or what have you, but if you could just...
As possible.
Throw it away, we greatly appreciate it because we have no business for D.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You didn't know we were moving things around?
Came down today and asked Ken, what do you have in store for this evening? Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. George, can we leave here with us, or with the mile ours, or you want it to get us tomorrow?
I don't know why not, as long as they're dry.
So, can you, something, you put a note on the, on this A&R plan about non-buildable lots?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, just write it in, we're not going to do anything.
I think that there...
Says that, yeah.
We have it.
The notation is there.
Open space.
It doesn't meet...
Well, what was the, what was the purpose of the condition then?
Only, only to make it a part of the voice vote that the board took, that's all, it's a part of your record.
Thank you very much. Richard is going to be hanging around, George, so thank you so much.
Well, no, we didn't approve that.
You want to take mile ours?
Yes, please.
It says endorsement of, of the planning board should not be construed as determination of conformance with the zoning bylaw relative to shape, upwind, et cetera.
Next, we have a approval-not-required submission for Onset Avenue, Kara Stone Street Court.
Mr. Chairman, that application was submitted, but it was asked to be postponed until after the mediation is complete.
Who requested it be postponed?
The, the applicant.
Yeah, I thought that's why Rich was staying.
Yeah, no, is there a letter for that postponement, or just they called you?
No, there was no letter.
I don't think you can postpone, you file a Form A, we have 21 days to say yes or no.
That's right.
It has to be formally withdrawn, or we deny it.
So, the application was submitted, and he asked you for, to continue it, but we need that. Otherwise, the application's submitted, he's going to come back in 21 days and say, "Hey..."
Rich, uh...
I'm going to call him, I, I saw this was on the agenda, and you're absolutely right. I mean, if, you, you have to...
Wish my wife could have said that.
It has to be withdrawn, otherwise, it'll be constructively approved.
That's, thank you.
So, let me, let me give them a call.
Okay.
I'd like to cover your back.
That's it. I got a lawyer, an engineer, I can't lose.
Oh, yes, you can.
I will jump to the next item, I don't know if that's, is this a repeat, or do they have some new information for us? This is street acceptance for long-built homes. Woods at Great Neck, I would assume. Have they been in more, again, or is this just a...
No, they haven't, this is a continuation of that discussion that was previously...
Okay.
Before the board, and I, and I thought because Charlie was here that it might be appropriate to, to bring up this, because it was Charlie that identified the, this, the statute that requires the, the positive restriction of, of rights in, within a right-of-way, in a subdivision, to, 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 to create ownership, single ownership of the right-of-way. And the town council, in an email to, in response to that issue, had said that there was, there was no change of ownership that occurred as a result of the acceptance of a street, which was news to me, but one of the things that, that Charlie had identified, our consulting engineer had identified, was the, the idea of showing ownership within the right-of-way on the plan. At this time, that ownership is not shown within the right-of-way for the individual property owners in accordance with the deeds that were provided. And the question to the board was, is it in your purview? Are you interested in, in continuing the discussion on the street acceptance plans as to whether or not the ownership should be shown on the plan when town council has, has said that it, it doesn't take effect with street acceptance?
Could I ask a question?
Well, the... Yes, please.
On a private way, I thought it was statute that the lots on either side owned to the center of the private way. I thought that was some type of a statute.
They, they do, and that was the point that I was trying to make, was that the plan that they were providing for street acceptance doesn't show that fact.
Right.
They provided two or three examples of deeds where they claimed that they still controlled all of the fee interest in the streets for that subdivision. My interpretation of deeds was that what they were claiming that provided them with the ownership was nothing more than a right which they were granting to the lot owners to travel from Great Neck Road to wherever their lot might be in that subdivision, and it did nothing to retain the fee ownership in long, long-built homes or whatever it was, whatever the organization was that was doing that. But when it comes to making an appraisal of each piece that's taken in behalf of the town, when you go for a street acceptance, whoever the attorney is or the appraiser for the town is doing that, he wants to know against whom... for the town, is doing that, he wants to know against whom is that property being taken, within the street lines. So if it's shown on the plan that Joe Jones owns half the street width for 175 feet, there's an area there, and his name is shown. If, if Longbuilt owns the entire thing, that's fine, and I don't think it really makes any difference to your board whether it's one way or the other, but it does to the guy who's gonna do the appraisal of the street on behalf of the town, once the town gets into the idea of taking an easement over that street.
Could I ask another question? Wouldn't Longbuilt, or who the original developer was, wouldn't they have needed to make the right-of-way a separate lot, and deeded it that way to their development company in order to do what you just said?
No, no. What they would have to do in each and every deed would be to make an exception in the deed, or a specific reservation, that they were retaining all right, title, and interest in and to the street.
Okay.
And then granting the right of passage over the street to the individual lot owners. But it has to be a definite exclusion, or a statement of intent to retain the ownership.
Mm-hmm.
And in all the deeds which I looked at, in that entire development, nothing of that type was shown in any deed.
Not seen that.
So to me, that says that each lot owner owns to the center of the way, just as you suggested, Mike. And each one of those parcels, then, needs to be broken out and shown with dotted lines within the limits of the way.
Mm-hmm.
And that way, the appraiser knows what he's looking at, and who he's gonna assess a dollar damage, or whatever it is, to that portion of the street that's in front of that particular lot. Um, but it doesn't matter to the town which way it's done, it's just that in this case, um, they were claiming that they still owned it, in my opinion, they don't. That they, if they own property in there, they have a percentage of the right to pass and repass. If they conveyed all the lots out, then each individual, individual lot owner owns to the center of the way in front of his lot, plus he has the rights to pass and repass back and forth to Great Neck Road.
Right, unless, unless he, unless each deed said like, you know, Mike's, Mike's, you know-
Well, the, the difference would be, uh, the way it's described now, the town would have to take ownership of that road, rather than an easement.
No, no, but you're taking an easement over land owned by either one individual, if Longbuilt holds the whole road, or you're taking an easement over multiple pieces.
Right.
And you gotta know who you're taking the easement from.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the purpose of putting that on the plan.
Right, I get it.
So what is, is our street acceptance, uh, an easement, or a fee, or what are we taking?
I think that varies per project.
It does, I know, I can only speak for, for the town of Mashpee, they don't take the fee interest, because they don't want the liability with the fee interest. But what they do is for town purposes, and for maintenance reasons, they will take an easement over the way. There are two different ways of doing it, and I'm, I'm not an attorney to tell you which is in the best interest of the town or him to do, but those are two options which the town has.
So what are we voting on?
Whether, and, if you take a vote, it would be whether or not the plan itself, and whether the inspections have been done, which, which you have a letter in your file to that effect, that everything is to the point where it could be recommended to the Board of Selectmen for, uh, inclusion in a warrant for street acceptance.
But the question-
The plan you have, in my view, is lacking that information that tells you who owns the fee interest in the street. And as soon as that's cleared up, then there's no reason why you couldn't make your recommendation.
But our, our only purpose, as, as I understand this, is to determine that the road was built according to our specifications, but not whether they should take an easement, or a fee, or who, who owns the road, or, I mean, we're not making any of those legal decisions.
That's correct.
We're just saying that, you know, the thing's built okay.
Well, well, we're charged with giving the Selectmen a report on the sub, on the subdivision. Yes, we could say the road is constructed as per the plan and per the town standard, but at this particular point, the street acceptance plan is lacking this detail. And that's, now, is that something that would have to be corrected before the town could accept the easement, or could it be done either way, is there a higher cost associated with it?
Well, the way I understand it, the, the plan is prepared, has been prepared, but it's simply lacking that additional detail.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, they don't have an awful lot of expense to put that information on the plan, and give the Planning Office a copy of the plan that you can then look at.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can say, okay, now we recommend that it be presented to the Board of Selectmen for, uh, acceptance as a town way.
Yeah, as far as I know, they haven't submitted any street acceptance plan, right? Just the as-belt.
Um, I-
That's correct.
Think, okay, that, that may be.
Thanks.
All rise.
I have to adjust to your handwriting.
Can I read?
Okay, we'll just finish this discussion, then we'll jump back to that.
Uh, Ken, you may be right, I'm, I'm not positive about that, whether or not the actual street acceptance plan has been submitted to the Planning Department or not, but the last I knew, uh, it didn't have that information that we've been talking about on the plan.
No, it did not.
Okay.
Well, we can, can we recommend that the, uh, the acceptance without having the street acceptance plan as drafted, so that we know that it conforms to the plan, the roadway on, on the subdivision plan, and as constructed?
Well, you don't have a street acceptance plan, which is part of the recommendation that you make to the Selectmen. You need to have that street acceptance plan in your hand, that you can look at it and say, okay, we agree with the, with the information that's shown on this plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, once you have that, then you can make your recommendation, until you get it, I don't think there's anything you can do.
Shouldn't be a big deal for the developer to put it on one way or the other, on the plan.
No, it was his opinion at the time that, that they owned the streets. Um, I'm of the opinion that they don't, and I think each one of the deeds I read backs that up, along with the state statute, which I referenced-
Right.
-that says it has to be specific.
Specifically on that point, the, the developer went to his title insurance company and found that indeed Charlie was right on, on this order, that it specifically had to identify the, the ownership rights to extinguish those that the property owners would have.
Well, the, the order of conditions states that the developer will maintain and, and manage the roadway until such time as accepted by the town, or turned on, over to the homeowners' association, so was the intent of the ownership of the road to go to the homeowners, or homeowners' association?
I've never seen-
But that's not spelled out anyway.
I've never seen the homeowners' association, so I don't know what it says.
Mm-hmm.
But specifically, if, if there was no language even in the homeowners' association, it has to be in the deed, in order for it to be effective.
In order for it to exist?
Yeah.
You've got a-
Because if they pass papers on-
Real property ownership.
If they pass papers to you on Lot Five, and say, together with the right and repass over the street shown on the subdivision plan, you get the lot and you get the rights.
Mm-hmm.
They've retained nothing, other than the fact that if they own other lots there, they own a percentage of the road, so long as they still have a lot there. As soon as they convey all the lots out, their interest in the road is done.
Gone. And that's what the deed showed you, right?
Everyone that I read had the exact same language, yeah, they were all the same language.
Longbuilds out.
So, but it doesn't matter to this board which way it's done, it's just the plan has to be correct, so that whoever praises it in behalf of the town is essentially taking an easement against a certain lot owner.
Mm-hmm.
And he can't tell how much that easement is until he sees the, the detail on the plan.
Well, right now, if we were asked to issue a report, we would have to say that there's been no street acceptance plan submitted, and there's a cost associated with that.
I would, I would just say that you haven't received a copy of, uh, a plan for review and recommendation as a street acceptance plan.
Mm-hmm.
Cost, or whatever it is, doesn't matter.
'Cause that's generally, when it gets to town meeting, is, is this gonna cost the town any money upfront to accomplish this, and if it does, it goes down.
Perhaps the other counsel-
Construction-wise, it's up to snuff. Uh, I was out there, along with Dave Bernard, we did two or three inspections out there, certain things were done to our satisfaction, um, I believe that there's a letter in your file for this project, from both David and myself, that says we're happy with it, so that part of it is complete. Construction looks good, it's just the issue of-
And it makes sense to move toward acceptance while it's in that condition.
Absolutely. Uh, you, you just need the final plan to look at, and then you can make your recommendation.
Rich, would you like to comment?
Oh, sure, uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, the, you know, the key event in the whole chain is, it's not even a town meeting vote, it's the Selectmen's vote, because they're the ones who lay the road out, all town meeting is doing is accepting their layout, and when the Selectmen vote, they're voting to lay out certain meets and bounds, and I, I don't know the particulars here, but if the, the applicant can't come forward with a, a plan that describes the meet and, meets and bounds, there's nothing for the Selectmen to lay out, um, that's gonna be the, the real problem.
There, there is a layout plan, Rich.
Okay, well-
And it, it follows the conformity of the subdivision with its dimensions and all.
Okay.
The only difference is that, within the confines of the sidelines of the layout-
Uh-huh.
Since there has been no reservation on the part of the grantor-
Right.
-to retain the strict fee ownership of that street-
Goes to all the, about us.
All the abutting owners. And the way I understand it is, when the Selectmen lay it out, they will assign somebody to appraise that as land of low value, supposedly.
Not nec, not necessarily.
But it, but it goes into a document that says that so much land is being taken by so-and-so as an easement in behalf of the town.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
There, there are three different ways to do it. Uh, of late, what the Selectmen-
Three?
Yeah, yeah, am I holding up two fingers? That's a real lawyer trick. Uh, sorry, uh, thanks, George. Uh, the first way, which is what the Selectmen have been doing lately, is they've just been voting to lay out the roadway without any land takings, either easement or even fee. And that, that is an acceptable way of doing it, it's, it's, there's a, almost a constructive, an implied easement to pass and repass. Um, the second way to do it is actually to formally acquire easement rights, um, and in that case, you would be doing a taking, or perhaps acceptance of a gift, and then you would actually want the, um, the, the meets and bounds for deed purposes. And then finally, uh, there's the full taking, where you actually take the roadway in fee.
Right.
And that's a lot easier when the, when the developer actually reserves the right as a separate parcel, rather than just sort of lumping it into, you know, as surplus to, to each individual deed. So it, it's not necessary to go with approaches two and three lately, as I say, of late, the town's been going with approach one. Uh, the question of which of the three is better, I, I've heard all kinds of arguments about it, certainly steps two and three are the more formal way of doing it, but I think it's a policy question as to whether that level of formality is required.
What is step one?
You just lay it out, and under common law, uh, the laid-out road, uh, there's an implied easement of the public to pass and repass over the laid-out road, notwithstanding the fact that the butters continue to maintain, I think under the derelict fee statute, or perhaps even right in their deeds, uh, an interest to the middle of the road.
Lay, what, what do they, what do you vote? You know, to lay out this as a public way?
That's right. That's right, it, they're, they're different transactions, laying out a way is not an acquisition of property.
My measly forty-eight years of real estate practice is just blown up, I always thought you had, I, I know the old ones are, you know, are public, they didn't necessarily do a taking, but I thought these days-
No.
Okay.
You can talk to Sid Smithers, oh, you're laughing, you, you know Sid Smithers.
Why?
Uh, you know Sid too, well, you can talk to Sid, and Sid will tell you that just laying it out is enough.
So do we have a plan sufficient to do a, a laying out?
If that's the case, yes. 'Cause number three would be out, because the developer didn't retain the rights, and number three is out-
You heard with a deed from everybody.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it still be prudent, though, to have the plans updated to show the butters owned up to the middle of the road, just for legal purposes?
You, you wouldn't need it if they're do, if they're doing option number one.
But I would still think that having that laid out would be beneficial at the time of recording, and, and especially in reference to liability exposures, right?
That's the question I'd have, as to who's liable for what, if the fee ownership is still in the name of the abutting owners, and the town really doesn't have an easement, but there's just a public way, what, who gets involved then, when somebody stubs a toe, or breaks a nose and sues somebody, who do they sue?
Well, they could sue everybody, uh, which is typically what happens, but it, it depends ultimately on what the cause of the injury is. If the cause of the injury is the town's negligent maintenance of this way, um, well then, there's some limited liability, the statutes.
Is there any, what kind of language, then, is involved in, in, uh, option number one, that, uh, gives the town the rights and so forth to go in there? What's the difference between that and obtaining an easement, where they get rights to go in and maintain drainage, and plow snow, and repair the pavement, and so forth?
Well, the act of accept, the act of accepting a layout, uh, gives you an implied easement, uh, and as part of the implication, you go in, you plow, you maintain, you do what's necessary.
In this particular case, the homeowners are supposed to maintain the drainage system, which is outside the limits of the layout of these streets.
Mm.
So there's something that they have to do, regardless of how the town does it, but, um-
So we've created a meets and bounds description of this parcel, and nowhere we're identifying ownership here?
No.
From what I hear, we don't need to. Or, I would think, I would think that the, how does, how does the town go about making that taking? It's not a taking, but-
It's not a taking.
What is it?
In fact, you don't even have to record the acceptance at the registry, the only place that you have to record the acceptance is with the town clerk and the street acceptance book. And that's the official document for purposes of what's a public way and what's not.
A lot easier. The town doesn't even assume responsibility, I mean, to maintain the road.
No, we're not obliged to maintain roads.
Now, this, that particular subdivision, I think, is on its third owner, and if the ownership of this parcel is the first guy, and he's outside of this process altogether, he has no, no standing?
Well, I, the trouble with barging in where you don't know all the facts, is you've barged in when you don't know all the facts, and-
Piece of cake.
When is that gonna stop?
Yeah.
Wing it. You know, if you feel that there is some set of facts over who owns what, that's gonna cause a problem for the town, then that's something to include in your recommendation to the Board of Selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
And we recommend that instead of doing what you've been doing lately, you get easements of fee interests from everybody involved, I mean, that can be part of your recommendation. But I guess my point is, is that a street acceptance is not necessarily a real estate project.
It's a local exercise.
Yeah.
Doesn't that bring up questions of, uh, title later on, and whether or not, if there's nothing recorded in the Registry of Deeds, how does anybody, uh, know whether that street is now a public way or a private way still?
Uh, you would ordinarily never find that out at a Registry of Deeds, you would have to go to the town clerk's office in the given town to look at the street acceptance book.
And hope that it's there.
Well, I, I can tell you that, uh, a number of people spent probably, and I, Charlie, I think you were involved in it too, uh, about a year updating the street acceptance book, and while, you know, I'm not gonna say it's a hundred percent perfect, but it's in pretty good shape right now, even going all the way back to colonial roads, uh, I mean, the history behind this thing is, is just incredible. But it's not a Registry of Deeds issue- But it's not a registry of deeds issue. It's not a real estate issue. You can make it one if you want to acquire interests. It's easy. It's just to see if the town will vote to accept the selectmen's layout of, you know, Main Street as described in a plan on file in the office of the town clerk. Or you can put the meets and bounds in if you wish. And further, to authorize the town to acquire by fee, easement, or otherwise, a parcel of land or parcels described as follows in exhibit B on file in the office of the town clerk and to appropriate the sum of, you know, nominal. But if you're gonna go that way, what you wanna do is to go around to all the putative rights holders and get them to sign. Because if you're actually gonna go that kind of taking route, if they won't agree to it, why do you want to accept it?
One of the big reasons why people have consistently wanted the town to take the streets over is because of maintenance issues.
Plowing, yeah.
Well, not only plowing, but the maintenance of the pavement and the drainage and so forth.
Yeah.
And in cases where, where for one reason or another, the roads were never completed, the town finds itself in a box.
Yeah.
In this particular case, the road is in good shape and it would seem that if, if by taking route number one, the town is not obliged to do any maintenance in it, what's the point? Because you're right back at the same question or concern that people have had in the past. My road's falling apart and somebody needs to do something. And the problem with getting forty-nine different people to agree on spending ten bucks to fix their road is hard.
There's also been cases where, where roads were sold at tax auction as house slots.
Yeah, I mean, the question of road maintenance, it's, it's a discretionary function as to which roads get funded for repair and which ones don't. Because the problem is, as you know better than anybody, there just isn't enough money to go around to fix all the roads that need fixing.
Right, but counsel, wouldn't the street acceptance book, as you call it, make it a public way? And that's what these people seem to be after, is the town to take control of the street because they don't wanna maintain it.
Sure.
Although they did come up with some writing in their association or whatever that they take care of the drainage, which is on the side of the road and-
Outside of the layout.
Outside of the layout.
Yeah.
But I think that, that's the point, is they just wanna come in, they say, we don't wanna plow it, we don't wanna maintain it, we don't wanna fix the pavement if it starts to tear up or what have you. The street acceptance book, they fall onto a list that, that the maintenance department has a list of all the streets in the town and then he has to, or they have to apply their money and their, you know, which roads need to repair the most, you know. That street may never get repaired, but the town winds up being responsible for it. It's the just of what they're sitting here. So I agree with Charlie. I mean, the developer sold however many lots that are there and there's nothing in there saying in each of those deeds that we retain rights to it. So I look at it as that developer is out as owner of the road. The individual parties that bought along the street have their frontage and what have you. They own to the center of that road.
That's probably right.
So, so, I mean, I think I'm agreeing with you, Charlie, as the way, if I got it wrong, tell me, but. And I think they're sitting here saying, we want you to accept the road so we don't have to deal with it. So is item number one, we recommend that layout to the selectmen and let them do as they see fit? Or do we need something from each of these deeds that, or a plan that shows that each of these deeds goes to the center of the street?
Well, you know, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I think that's gonna be up to you. Typically, well, in a great number of communities, what the planning board is doing when the matter's been referred to the selectmen is looking at the technical condition of the road. You know, what kind of shape is it in? You know, because you don't wanna be put in a position of accepting a road that it's not paved, it's, it's a disaster. And that's typically the role that planning boards will play in making a recommendation to the board of selectmen. Once that technical information goes on to the board of selectmen, it's usually up to the selectmen because they're the ones who are getting involved in preparing the budget. I'm telling you, John, like you didn't know this, you were on the board of selectmen.
Just asking, yeah.
You know, that's usually the sort of thing that the selectmen worry about. But in terms of deeds and so forth, look, if you're aware of some set of facts that the selectmen wouldn't know about, there's nothing to prohibit this board from passing that information on as part of the recommendation.
Well, it, for one thing, it seems like as soon as we seem to have nailed down a procedure for street acceptance, we've now taken a turn. The other thing, I believe the language in the street acceptance is the selectmen will create a plan. So if a developer has given us a plan that's flawed, I think their own procedure says that they will create the correct one.
The selectmen's procedure is just procedure-
Which they may not have to do.
They don't have to do, and I'll tell you what, if an issue like that came before the board of selectmen, I would be strongly recommending to the board of selectmen that unless they see a plan that someone other than the taxpayers of the town paid for, that they don't lay it out.
And that's our only reason for seeing that it's done properly so that it doesn't cause the town to incur a cost.
I think that is the policy that, I remember when that little street that's down off of Great Neck Road down in East Wareham, just before the Squaw's Path, there's a little subdivision street there. They laid that street out. That was one of Ken Ferreira's plans, I think. They were responsible for making sure that plan got presented and made available, which you then reported to the board of selectmen and they took it from there. But from my own edification, I'd like to know exactly what the policy would be from now on in terms of trying to explain it to somebody who asked me or you asked me, you know, how is this procedure dealt with now? What is the town actually doing for the individual that's asking for street acceptance? Because right now, I'm not sure I know. If it were two and three, I could say one thing or another, but if it's some other thing which is nebulous with me, let me just put it that way, I don't understand it and this is new. I need an explanation on that and I would think that your board would want to know about it too so that when somebody comes here and says, what do I have to do to get my street accepted? You'll be able to tell them what.
Well, that's what we have been doing. You know, I've got another development on the other side of town. We've spelt out the process that was ironed out and now this is a completely, oh gee, you don't have to do that, we'll just take it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think the process is straightforward. Someone wants their street accepted, they should get a layout plan. That's the very first thing they should do. They should then apply to the board of selectmen to ask that their street be laid out. The selectmen will open the process, take a vote to refer it to the planning board. The plan would then come along with the referral to you. You can look at the plan to see if you think it's adequate and I'm sure, you know, you'll lean on Charlie heavily on that. You'll want to look at the street as it exists at present to see what kind of shape it's in. If I were a party that was really trying to hit the home run on this and see it through, I would take the steps that Charlie was referring to. I would go out and get all the abutters to sign off on whatever instruments are necessary to convey easements or fee underneath the road. And when I brought this to the board, so I would bring it in as a package ready to go. So then it hits you, you look at it, you judge whether you think from a technical point of view it's worthy. You make your recommendation to the board of selectmen. And then the board of selectmen makes the policy decision. Number one, do we have enough money to lay out roads? Number two, do we want to accept the layout, subject to approach one, two, or three? Because that's gonna be with the board to decide. And if it's two or three, then the, then the title instruments are right there. And then we write up an article, much of the type that I described to you before. If there's somebody really serious about it, that's the way to begin it. And I think it's straightforward, which is not to say that there isn't a lot of work. It's a lot of work, but most, but that work is gonna fall primarily on the folks that want the layout.
But in addition to the road, we've got drainage facilities. We've got retention ponds and detention ponds and swales. And if they're just taking the road, I mean, don't they take, don't they have to take other things? And don't they have to be shown on a plan? So if they, if those aren't shown on the plan, who's responsible for the appropriate structures that go along with the road? If they're just saying the road's public, who's keeping the drainage facility working?
That's all, that's all that you're doing when you accept a street. You're not committing to maintain drains, swales, detention basins. That's not what the statute says.
That's the question in terms of who's responsible for that maintenance. And it's the first question that most people ask, or they say like George has said, we don't wanna maintain our street, we want the town to take care of it. So when they would come to the planning board, they come to me as a consultant and ask me, what do I get out of this? I say, what do I say? I don't know because it's gonna be up to the selectmen what they decide they want.
It's almost like saying, you know, what do you get out of going to church? It's, it's up to each person to decide what they get out of going to church. You go in with a set of expectations that are great or small. Maybe they're met, maybe they're not. If I were living on a way where I wanted the town to take over drainage pipes and swales and whatnot that weren't in the road layout, I'd come in with instruments prepared that would allow the town to acquire all that. But if you don't come in with that, you know, the town isn't going to take it. And there are times when it's important for the town to take it, but I'll tell you, there are times when it's not. I was dealing with a flooding incident. I won't name the way, but it had serious implications for the value of land. And the landowner was saying that we had put in, or we had acquired, or we were maintaining a drainage, some drainage infrastructure that was flooding his valuable land in a way that was rendering it valueless. Well, went back, looked to see whether we had accepted the road. We had. Did we accept all this drainage structure? No. How did it get there? The apartment complex across the street, when they came in and got approval, put it in. So guess what? I was very happy we didn't own that drainage because I was able to tell this gentleman, you want half a million dollars for your piece of land? Go over there.
I've never heard going to the selectmen be compared to a religious experience.
You've been missing out.
I think most of what you have alluded to does get done. We have an ASBIL plan for just the thing that you spoke of above. That's in the files. The location of drainage, water, catch basins and all of that, that's shown on that plan. So it's a part of the file that's here. It could be referred to as anything that the board of selectmen does. But a layout plan is simply those lines on the plan that define the shape of it, shall we say, the meets and bounds of it. So I guess what I'm hearing is that you've got the information, if they simply provide you with a plan, you submit it to the selectmen and tell them that it's been completed in accordance with the subdivision.
So I'd like to make a motion because-
What is the purpose of a street acceptance plan? Does that go to municipal maintenance or does it?
It was always my thought that it put the general public on notice that the town owns it.
That's right.
Or they've got an easement in it or there's something and they're responsible for it. But what I'm hearing tonight is that maybe they're not going to be responsible. Maybe they don't want the responsibility and they don't have to take it. So I would think that that would be the kind of thing that would have to be explained when you go to a town meeting to take a vote, wouldn't it?
That's right, that's right. Because in the past, that's what people thought, if the street was accepted, the town owns the street.
Right.
Now, this particular case, wasn't the, was there a homeowners association or whatever it was that they, they agreed to maintain or a condition, whatever it was that they agreed to maintain the drainage?
I think if this is the same one, the homeowner's deed actually says the developer will maintain the ways until such time as it's accepted by the town.
Maybe it's different.
Or he defaults and leaves everybody hanging.
Which is typically what happens, right? But that, that becomes-
We don't wanna accept.
Comes a case for between the developer and the lot owner then. You know, if that's the term of the homeowners' conditions, it is what it is, I guess. But.
So I'd like to make a-
But you would still need the sign-off of all the abutting properties.
No?
Not necessarily. It'd be great to have, but I think at the end of the day, the selectmen will make the decision as to whether it'll be route one, route two, or route three, if you'll forgive the description. If it were me coming in looking for a street acceptance, boy, I'd come in with all the papers signed and ready to go and then let the selectmen decide which were the three.
Well, it's my understanding that that's the only sticking point on this particular subdivision. I think he's got the abutters list signed off. He's had the inspection. The only thing missing was his layout plan. That was-
No layout plan, do not pass goat, do not collect two hundred dollars.
Does not, well, he's got, he's got an ASBIL, but not a street acceptance plan. With identifying the ownership of the roadway.
How does the town planner or somebody in my position then respond to somebody who comes in and says, I wanna get my street accepted. What's the procedure and what happens at the end of the day? Who's responsible for the street if I go through this process and provide you with a plan and I put an application together and get it to the board of selectmen by a certain date because there's a cutoff of the warrant? They're doing that with the expectation of getting something out of it. Presumably a relief from any responsibility for the maintenance of the road. What does somebody in Ken's position or my position or the planning board's position say to a person when he's got three options, one of which seems to say that you may not get anything out of it?
With your permission, Mr. Chairman. Street acceptance merely opens a way to public use, for public travel. That's all it does. It gives the town the ability, although not necessarily the obligation, to maintain it. It gives the town the legal right to plow it. You know, we had our big issue over snow plowing. The circumstances under which a town may plow a private way are extremely limited. Public way, that's not a problem. A way open to public use, which is kind of a high standard, you know, you can plow those. So I think as a practical matter, what it does is it gets the street on the list of ways that are gonna be given to the guys who plow and it probably gets it plowed. As, again, speaking as a practical matter, I don't think it means that the highway crew's gonna be going down there with asphalt and a roller and, you know, redoing the blacktop. That's a, that's a discretionary function for the leadership of the town to determine. And so we can't promise that or promise that it's gonna happen on a particular day. But right now, if you have a private way and you want it repaired, you have to sign a petition, submit it, pledge a financial contribution and the town can do the work. It takes that off the table. It means that the town could go in and do the work if the money's there to do it.
Excuse me, Rich.
Can we take care of-
Letter I submitted?
Yes, was there something else you-
That's all, I just wanted to make sure you tied that up.
Okay. I didn't know if you were here for something further.
That's all. Good night, folks.
Thank, thank you for that.
Do we have a withdrawal?
Yes.
Okay. So on this particular subdivision, is the developer unwilling to put this notation on the plan?
He was just under the assumption that he owned the entire street.
And now he's not because his title insurance company confirmed it.
Yeah.
So is he going to execute?
I don't know. I don't know.
Doesn't necessarily have to.
Now, I don't know that it's absolutely necessary, but.
Well, for the sake of being consistent with everybody, I think we should have him. Because that's pretty much what we've told everybody that has come to us for street acceptance. That's what they have to do. I don't think, they may not need to do it.
It's, it's not.
It's, it's not... I was insisting on it only because I felt that there was a, a certain procedure that the town, through the Board of Selectmen, would be following based on previous work that the town has done. If it's not going to follow that route, then neither you nor I have to be concerned about that.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I'm, I'm not saying you can't do it the way you've been doing it, all I'm doing is telling you what the, the legal minimums are.
But there needs to be, doesn't it need to be a policy set up so that people know what their expectations are, I guess, is what I'm trying to say? And we've, we've sort of had a policy, or at least I thought we did, that showed that certain things would take place, and then the individual's responsibility for his road maintenance, which he really is after, and we've had that how many times? That's now dispensed with, he doesn't have to worry about it. Now, if a road doesn't get plowed, he calls Dave Menard, or he calls Alan, or he calls somebody else and says, why is my road plowed? That's what they're really after, when they're asking for street acceptance. If all they were after was somebody to be able to travel up and down the street, because now it's a public way, they might not want that.
Well, let me, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, let me put it a little differently. See, when it's being posed as, you know, what are we promising them when they get their street accepted? To say that you're promising anything is a very dangerous situation, because you're, really, you're creating almost a form of contract. You know, we promised you this, and you didn't do it. That's not what we're doing. At a bare minimum, the public is gaining a right to travel over the accepted way. So what does the, the abutter get out of it? What they get, and this is without promise, their street will be treated in the same manner as any other public way is treated. And with all the pluses and minuses that come with that status. The fact that you live on a public way does not mean, and I'm speaking really, I'm speaking as a lawyer here, I'm speaking as the person who would have to defend the claims, but it's important to understand this. The fact that you're in a public way does not mean that things are going to be maintained to a standard that's here, 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 or there.
Can I make a comment? This has nothing to do with accepting this subdivision, but Mr. Bowen's shared with us some information that doesn't sit well with me as a resident or a taxpayer, and I'd like to state why. You know, we're talking about a subdivision with 20 homes in it, and they're probably paying $5,000 each in taxes, and some of them have children, so they have schools. But other than that, the services from the town are really emergency, police, fire. There's no trash pickup anymore, there's a lot of services that have been stopped. Well, if the town has to repair that road every 10 or 15 years, because it's got a few potholes or whatever, I think that's not a big deal for the town, it shouldn't be, should be part of what's expected. And when you mention that option one, I personally wouldn't support that as a planning board member or a resident. So I would ask that the planning board consider not pushing that along to selectmen as an option and writing it that way. I'm just not comfortable with all that. I, I think their deeds are pretty clear, they're responsible for their own retention ponds, drainage easements, that's great. But the road should be the responsibility of the town, that's just my personal opinion, and also in liability purposes, where the people do own to the middle of the road, if there's a pothole and somebody falls and breaks an ankle, I think the town should be first in line in that liability exposure and not the residents. And that's all I have to say about that.
My understanding is that, I think it doesn't make a difference if the town takes it by easement or by declaration, I mean, it's a public way or it's not a public way, and I don't think that that changes the town's obligation to fix the road. It's a discretionary administrative, I think, unless Rich says differently.
No, Bob, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, Bob, I agree, and, and you use the key word there, discretionary. You know, Mike, I don't disagree with, with what you said, but you have to separate the policy, policy issue from what the law says. What the law says is that, you know, in terms of how money gets spent, and when, and for what purpose, that's a policy matter, it's discretionary. But, you know, I agree with Bob, that if we accept it and we're holding it out as, you know, for public travel, well, you know, there are things that come with that, too.
I understand, but it's not discretionary for me as a resident to not pay my taxes. I mean, if you'd like to open that up and say, Michael, you can not pay or pay, I'll take care of my road. But I have to pay my taxes.
Well, if you have a private road, though, if you, you know, these 20 people, or however many were down there, if that's a dead-end street, how many of the public are going to drive up and down a dead-end street? So if they want to make it public, just to have it maintained, that's fine. But when they bought into that homeowners' association, it was a private way. So they're petitioning to make it a public way. Well, you don't have to accept it. Selectmen can say sorry.
Right. I understand that.
But right now, the deed, the deeds in there say the developer will maintain the roadway till such time as accepted by the town.
Deeds don't say that. Homeowners' association might say it, but the deeds don't.
Right.
I was under the impression from one of the residents that it says, or maybe it says it in this purchase and sale.
Yeah, in the, thinking of the PNS agreement.
The conveyance don't say anything about that.
Okay. Well, my point is, if the, if this isn't successful, this acceptance, and the developer disappears, where are they then? It's a civil action between them and the, and the developer, or?
Yeah, probably.
Homeowners have a right to petition to get it accepted. I mean, that doesn't change. All that leaves a doubt in my mind as to, again, is there a policy, a specific policy that somebody can point to that says, well, when you go for street acceptance, this is the town's policy with respect to certain things, whether it's maintenance of drainage, or paving, or plowing, or whatever it is. So that somebody knows whether it's worthwhile going through the process, or whether they're going to be stuck with it. But maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Well, I, I think discretionary. The selectmen needs to, need to give us a standard that they'll want to accept, I guess.
Pretty much.
Alan.
If you want, I can make a couple comments. Rich, I think it's Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, this falls into, on public and private roads. When the state talks about a road, it has to be a road that goes from one road to another. If it's going into like a dead-end area, technically the town doesn't work on it at all, doesn't have to, under Mass. General Law, number one. Number two, the Board of Selectmen does not have to accept any road. Town of Sandwich, just so you understand, it's been on a freeze for at least a couple years now, and there's other towns that no longer accept roads, because they just don't have funds, et cetera. And the board can at any time, it's decided it doesn't want to accept it, doesn't have to. And there is a policy for that.
Especially a dead end.
It's just a policy, period. The Board of Selectmen have the right whether to accept or not accept the road.
And George, if I may, you know, with, with many things, people enjoy the right of petition to town meeting by getting X number of signatures. If citizens were to petition to put a street acceptance on the warrant without going through the process that I outlined, that's a non-starter, because what, remember, what town meeting is doing is accepting the selectman's layout. And if the selectmen haven't laid anything out, it's a nullity. So, you know, it, it's tough. And by the way, I'm not for or against this or, or any other one, I'm just telling you what the law says. But on what Alan had to say, you know, on a dead-end road, you know, some, there are, there's a type of street called the private way open to public use, which allows the town to maintain the road, plow the road, because, because it's open to public use. If you have a dead-end street, there, there's almost a legal presumption that that's not going to be open to public use, because nobody is transiting from A to B through that dead-end street. Sure, the people who live on the street need to use it, but it's not of a general benefit to the public. So in a situation like that, you know, the, the folks' real recourse is to follow through on the acceptance process. And then when you, you get on the public way list, you're treated just as any other public way is. And maybe that means paving, plowing, the whole works. But I can't sit here and say, as a matter of law, Michael, you know, you get the whole package of goodies, because that's not what the law says. It's, it's up to the policymakers, and I'm far from any policymaker around here, it's, it's up to the policymakers to decide what, what you get on Christmas morning.
Is, is there a difference between giving the person who's asking for street acceptance some idea of his expectations versus recognizing that someday his, his street might need to be repaved, and he will be put on a list of top, of priorities, he might be at the bottom of it, or he might be at the top of it, and maybe it'll get that done someday? It seems to me there's a difference between those two things. Is the latter what you're saying?
Yes, I, I think the latter is, is accurate and, and honest.
Well, accepted and maintained by the town is at the same level of every other town excepted street. It does, they don't get any privileges or priorities that...
No, and I'm not involved in setting priorities for street maintenance at all, but if I were, you know, you, I think you'd be looking at such factors as, is it a busy street, you know, what state it is, is it in, you know, things like that. I, I think from a maintenance point of view, if you have the busiest road in town and it needs maintenance, and then you have a, a street with three people on it, gee, I think I know where I'm going to put the, the streets as compared to each other on the maintenance list.
But that, that's why the, the street, up until now at least, in order to be recommended to the planning board for acceptance, had to be in good repair, complete in terms of its obligations through the subdivision control law, so that when it did come to the town, it didn't mean that they had to go out and immediately start repaving.
Yeah.
But it was, but that it was in good shape, and that when, in the course of time, it had to be done, because it was, the paving was falling apart after 35 years, that it would be the town's responsibility to repair that.
Yeah.
Not, not the individual citizen who lived on that street.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I, I don't disagree with that. I mean, the town, whatever, it would be the town's obligation to repair that road. When that repair took place, you know, that's a policy question.
From, from that perspective, I don't find that to be objectionable to, to anything, and it's basically in keeping with what's been done.
Yeah.
So that doesn't really make any difference.
What I have told individuals inquiring, that things like detention basins and stuff will be the responsibility of the homeowners, because otherwise it's just not going to get done, unless it gets to critical mass, so to speak.
And I think this is where the planning board's input and review is so important, because, you know, I'm thinking back to that case that I was describing to you earlier. You know, if you have a problem street, and you know that the, I'll call it the infrastructure is going to be critical to your ability to maintain that street as a passable street, you know, that might be a case where after your technical review, you looked at it and said, you know, hey, selectmen, if you accept this street, you better make sure you get that drainage area, you better make sure that you're going to have the ability to get the water off the road, because it's not going to evaporate. You know, you want all those drainage rights that come with it. So there are going to be cases where, you know, the board, Charlie, are going to look at it and say, yeah, Board of Selectmen, we've reviewed this, it's our recommendation that if you accept this, that you get these pertinent rights along with it, otherwise you'll have an ongoing maintenance nightmare. It's case by case.
In the case, in case number one, though, you're saying that nothing has to be put on public record?
No.
That's troublesome to me as a lance of air.
It's, it's all a question of where you look. Because when, when you go to the street acceptance book, name of street, date that it was accepted, I'm trying to remember whether the warrant article number is in there, and then you go back, you look at the warrant article, and there will either be in the text, preferably in the text of the warrant article, a meets and bounds description, or perhaps a reference to a plan, which also is supposed to be on file. So it's not that there's no record, it's just that you're looking for the record in town hall rather than over at the registry.
In, in this particular case, where the developer has been advised that his title insurance company does not care for the way it's laid out, is that what I was hearing?
No, that's not the case.
The title insurance company confirmed that Charlie was, was correct in his assessment of the state law, that they'd have to specifically extinguish rights for those individual lots, for the developer to take ownership of the right of way.
Well, for the town to take an easement on, or just for the developer?
Well, no, if the town were to take an easement, it would have taken easement rather than from the developer, from each of the individual homeowners.
And that, if, if you go that route, that's why the plan and the individual areas become the port. And it was always my assumption that the town would either be taking an easement, or they'd be taking the fee ownership of the street with the maintenance and so forth of the street, as they normally do their course of business.
So chances are that he's going to correct his plan and...
I don't know.
Don't know.
I don't know. If, if the policy turns out to be that they don't care to take an easement, they don't care to take the fee, they'll simply make a layout, and the chips fall where they may at some point in the future, then the plan that he's got would be okay, because it won't matter. I don't particularly like it, especially if the plan doesn't get put on record, because so many times, things don't get put where they're supposed to be, and things get lost.
But George, if, if this board feels like it wants easements or fee conveyed along with the street acceptance, you can make that recommendation, and the Board of Selectmen can then, if they want to follow your recommendation, can go to the individual homeowners, because the developer's out of the picture, can go to the individual homeowners and say, well, we'll lay it out if you give us deeded rights.
Well, that's, that's, that's kind of what we're trying to iron out, is because you have one subdivision where they go around, they collect the signatures of all the homeowners, they submit a petition for street acceptance, and then you have another one that says, you know, even if they did sign it, they say, well, we don't own it, the developer does. So who's...
You could act on either one of them.
Yeah. The main thing I want to see is a consistent method that every subdivision faces without excess expense to the town or to the homeowners.
But, but under subdivision control, you don't have to insist that they make a layout plan.
Okay.
I mean, you, you go through the process of the definitive plan approval, that plan gets recorded in the registry, guy builds his streets, he gets his covenant released, he gets his building lots, and he goes on his merry way. If the residents, or the homeowner, or the developer wants a street laid out for the, for the town, then they have to prepare that plan, or somebody does.
Don't we require an as-built plan?
You do require an as-built plan, but that's not the same as a layout plan, and it's not necessarily a requirement through the subdivision control law that you insist on a layout plan for street acceptance. That's strictly up to the individuals that will live on that street.
How's the layout, the as-built and, and the layout plan going to be different?
The as-built plan would contain the location of catch basins, the pipe, the location of the water main, the gate valves, the hydrants, and so forth, utilities, basically, that are within the limits of the way. The layout plan simply shows the meets and bounds definition of the outline of the street layout. It shows nothing on the interior at all, and that's the difference.
I drafted those deeds, it's such a thing to do, but, yeah. All right, so I'd like to make a motion, just if we can focus this a little. I move that we notify the selectmen that the roadway was constructed in accordance with the rules and regulations of the planning board, except as waived, with the recommendations that the plan be recorded, and if the town seeks to take an easement or fee in the road, that the ownership interest of individual lot owners in the road be shown on the plan.
The only thing I would point out would be there is still time for the developer to address any shortcomings that may be real or imagined. there is still time for the developer to address any shortcomings that may be real or imagined between now and October Town Meeting, but I don't think there's anything in your motion that would be out of line. Yeah, I mean, I guess that's a question as to whether or not we make the recommendation now because if the road falls apart between now and October...
Could we make the applicant aware of the recommendation so that they have the opportunity to update that plan and show the ownership to the middle of the road and present it as such?
I think you simply need to get a copy of the plan in your possession. Right now, you don't have it. And I would not make a recommendation without a plan. If it doesn't show the separation of the ownership in the street, so be it at this point.
I thought we had the plan.
I saw a print. You've never seen the original Mylar. It's not in, I don't believe it's in the hands of the Board of Selectmen, and I don't believe it's in the Planning Department. I think it's still in the hands of the engineer that prepared it.
Then I withdraw my motion. I thought we had the plan.
Until you see one, I mean, perhaps you should correspond with Log Build Homes and advise them that if they want to go through with street acceptance, they need to get you a plan. And let it go at that, and then you make your recommendation. If it doesn't have the areas on there, then you wanna suggest Bob's motion, I think, from my point of view, seemed to be a good...
Couldn't we ask the town planner to reach out to Log Build Homes and request the plan, but also ask the planner to share with him the thoughts of the town engineer that the ownership should be shown on the plan to the middle of the road?
It doesn't have to, if they're not...
Yeah, but it doesn't hurt.
All I would say would be, if you want the street accepted, get us a plan.
Personally, I wouldn't. If I was on, I wouldn't want that shown because if someone is injured on the road, and people look at the plan and they see a name and thinking, you know, they think it's a public way, and, you know, it's the town's responsibility, and now we're gonna start tagging individual owners. I mean, it's a red flag to me that I wouldn't wanna put on a recorded plan just 'cause I think the town should be the responsible party.
I agree, but I thought Mr. Rowley said that was common practice.
It has been practice. I don't know that it's necessary in terms of a plan that gets recorded, but you need to have some indication if you're gonna go the easement route. Somebody's gonna have to know who the easement's being taken from, is my point.
Given to us.
So if it's a paper copy that gets submitted to somebody who's responsible for that after the Town Meeting vote, and you begin the procedure with actually going through with an easement, he's gonna need that information. I suppose you don't necessarily need it on the recorded plan.
And it could, it could have gone from the developer to the association.
If you know that for a fact.
But, I mean, that, it could have gone that way, it's just not...
You can ask him to provide you with information that says who owns the various portions of the street.
So if he, if he wanted to, yeah, okay.
I'm only going on the experience of when the water mains and when the sewer mains in particular were done, say, over at Rose Point, and easement plans were drawn. That information was necessary for the attorney who was doing the work to get that document into the registry of deeds in behalf of the town. And that's sort of where some of that came about.
So you able to get in touch with them and...
Yes, I'll be able to get in touch with the Log Build Homes and transfer that information to them and ask them to submit a plan.
I think the only plan that we possibly have on file is the as-built. That should be in the building. But I'm told the acceptance plan is ready and waiting, but I don't know what's on it.
It may be. I don't know.
All right, anything else on this topic? We beat it up enough?
Just one point, going to the selectmen.
Not really.
You really want a recommendation that is black and white. If you have any ambiguity, any gray, saying we may have to wait until just before Town Meeting to make sure it's in condition, the Board of Selectmen, with the moderator, et cetera, policy is that unless an article is complete and solid, we'll not put it on the Town Warrant. So be very careful.
Well, ours is only a recommendation.
I understand, but for us to put on the warrant, it's gotta be black and white from you to us.
Alan, you're thinking, and really the cutoff date for that is right around Labor Day, isn't it?
All right, back...
Mr. Chairman, question, counsel. So for the street acceptance, though, the street, the people on the street, the community that's together with their petition, need to file it with the selectmen first.
Yes.
And then it comes here. And we have it backwards here? Has it come to the selectmen yet?
Yes.
It would have had to come to the selectmen or if you have...
To be referred to us.
Okay.
It went, it was a while ago and...
About three or four weeks ago, wasn't it, George?
It was a while ago.
It was a while ago and it was...
But my question, Mr. Chairman, is they've just submitted petition then to the selectmen in order to come here. So there was no plan or anything submitted to the selectmen because all they have is the as-built, from what we understand, so. My question, Mr. Chairman, it did go to the selectmen first, and the selectmen have bounced it back to us. So as these parties have been coming here asking us questions, I thought this was a continuation, a discussion on an application that they were asking, what do we do? Where do we go?
No. In order to get to us, the selectmen have to refer it to us for a report. And what we are looking to do is make sure that everything is complete to a standard that we know, so we can give a favorable report back to them.
Okay. So might I ask, might I ask Mr. Slavin why he's here? Did they come to the selectmen with their request?
Let me go around the bottom a little bit, John. What happened with this originally was supposedly the developer had told the homeowners that he was applying for street acceptance. Never really happened. The homeowners came to the selectmen to talk about the issue. We told them, this is how you have to do the procedure. So they started from basically ground zero at that point. They submitted basically a petition to us signed. You know, to have street acceptance, we then forward it to the Board of Selectmen, from, to the planning board, for them to do their part, to come back to us and make a decision whether or not to put on the warrant.
Okay, that's fine. I only asked that because I thought one evening that the group came in, that they were asking us what we do, and I thought we had said to them, you go to the selectmen first. I was just asking, did they finally do that?
They did, they did go to the selectmen, they started the procedure. The subdivision roadways weren't complete at that time.
Gotcha, because they had a list of conditions. And the one woman said, we're gonna get this pavement fixed, and we're gonna get the swales taken care of, and we'll maintain. I just remember a lot of back and forth from the committee since they were coming in, and I'm saying to myself, they still haven't started the process by going, you know, gotta go upstairs, file it, and then it gets here. That's why when I, and I apologize to my fellow board members, I'm reading, you know, application revision. I know they didn't give us an application, as long as you guys got it and it's back here, I'm happy, but, so that's what...
What happened in between the initial request and now is the roadways were completed and signed off on, and they were allowed to pick up the procedure where they left off. All right. I do have a letter in front of me from requesting the... Take me a minute to get through the handwriting. Request the A and R plan for Onset Avenue on the agenda for June thirteenth, submitted by Stone Street Corp. Be withdrawn without prejudice. Yeah, Rich Serkey, attorney for the applicant.
Yeah, is there a date on that letter, please?
Six thirteen sixteen.
I move we accept the withdrawal.
I would second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. That concludes our regular agenda. What we have on the agenda is an executive session for the purpose of discussing the court-ordered mediation with Bay Point.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna do the minutes? Do you wanna do the minutes now?
Oh, yeah, if you've had a chance to review them. I know.
Take a minute.
Again, I'm concerned that we have these minutes, and we approve these long, long minutes, and then the tape says something else, but we approved minutes that said X, and the tape says Y, and where are we? I mean, and why are the minutes this long? Everyone good with those minutes?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Make a motion.
I can't, I didn't, I didn't attend them. I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the minutes of the January eleventh, two thousand sixteen, meeting, as written.
Uh, motions made. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, two abst...
I tell you, it says I wasn't here, but I remember all this. I came in late, I don't know. No, it says abst, I was abst, that's why I abstained, but I remember all this.
You got another one for, you got another official one? For the twenty-fifth, I think. Uh, January twenty-fifth, is that one ready to go? I think we were all present for that one.
I, I was not.
I move we approve the minutes.
I, I have one, one thing, Mr. Chairman, on page three. It's like the third, the third paragraph, it's just a one sentence on that paragraph. Mr. Cronin asks if the proposed building is the same as their two previously constructed assisted living units. So it says here, same as the two previously constructed. They said they had two others, so I would say their two previously constructed. Just kinda correct the sentence. Other than that, that's what I asked, what they said.
And I believe the only other thing was, if this was the minutes, Jim Kane's name was spelled on it.
So I would second Bob's motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
I have to abstain.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
This thing is just getting worse. And finally, March twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen.
Make a motion we approve as written.
Get a correction, I was absent.
Oh, you weren't listed. Okay. Discussion? Oh, was there a second?
That's second, Mr. Cronin's motion with the correction of Mr. Baptista's absent.
Thank you.
All in favor?
We have, doing discussion, I just have a question on page three. Back to Bob's comment about the minutes and the detail... Back to Bob's comment about the minutes and the detail, there's, there's, it talks about draft decisions, and it doesn't stipulate what the conversation was actually about. It says draft decision, but it doesn't say what held up the, the board's vote. Do you see that, or am I just not, I'm looking for too much detail? There's a lot of detail, but there's no detail. There's conditions, draft decision, review the decision, but there's really nothing of what we were trying to vote on that I can see there. Is that just for the motion?
Well, he was, he was referring to the draft decision that was submitted by the attorney, and that changes have been made.
Okay, I just don't see it in the minutes. I'm just seeing, I don't know if I'm looking, not looking for enough detail, or it just looks like it's kind of general.
Do we lose a sentence here somewhere?
Well, the, the end, just before the motion, was to continue the public hearing, because we didn't have a decision in, in time to...
Okay.
So, uh, the previous sentence, Attorney Cirque stated Mr. Rowley had sent him revisions previous to the hearing, and he brought them with him, along with an updated draft decision.
Okay. Thanks.
And the draft, and Mr. Reed said the draft decision hadn't been sent to the board for review until that evening.
Okay.
Or the day before. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstained?
Just a, just a quick question, I know we went from January twenty-fifth to, to March twenty-eighth. What happened to February?
I, was leap year.
Leap year?
That's happened and, uh, done yet.
Um, I, I don't know how they, how she...
Yeah, no, I, I...
Tackles them.
Just curious, because one of the January ones refers us to the February meeting for the decision. I kind of wanted to see the outcome of that one.
Okay. Excuse me. With that, I would be looking for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing court-ordered mediation with regards to Bay Point.
I would make that motion.
Second.
There's a second, and I would like a roll call, so Bob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes for me? Mike?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And we won't be returning to regular session, by the way. And I will make the statement that items discussed in executive session, if discussed outside of executive session, would have a detrimental effect on the town's position. And we will not, um... We will not be returning to regular session. Thank you. I did throw that in there, but it was...